Barbara Doss has been excused. Ken Killian?
Here.
Mike DeLecky?
Here.
Eileen Nichols?
Here.
John Miller?
Here.
Steve Becker?
Here.
Patrice Steiner?
Here.
I'll account it for her. Thank you. First item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing regarding ordinance 12-11 creating section 22.04b per n3 and 22.04 per, 22.04 per n3 per n4 regarding accessory structures. We'll begin with staff presentation.
Okay, this proposed ordinance is essentially being proposed to correct an error that was made previously. Last year, we adopted 1114, which is an ordinance that modified the regulations concerning accessory structures. And when that ordinance was drafted, we, I inadvertently got a couple of friends in the title of that ordinance. So when we did a repeal and recreate, that meant we accidentally repealed a couple of sections of the ordinance regulating fences and retaining walls. We did not intend to eliminate those sections. So this ordinance would put that language back into the zoning ordinance. There are no proposed changes to the language. It just reinserts the regulations that we had previously. So the plan commission has reviewed this and recommended approval, and staff also recommends approval. Any questions?
Thank you. No one has indicated a desire to speak in favor, against, or in general. Council discussion?
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
A motion and a second to close the public hearing. Roll call vote, please. Killian?
Yes.
DeLecky?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Council action?
I move that we adopt ordinance number 1211, which creates section 20.04b3 and 22.04b4. Those are both 22.
Second. A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Killian?
Yes.
DeLecky?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next on our agenda is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature of previous discussion. Please indicate if you prefer separate discussion and action. Item A is the minutes of the February 28th, 2012 council meeting. B is payment of bills. C is the February financial statement. D is appointments to boards and commissions. Tonight, I'm appointing to the tourism committee Deb Jenny, Arlene Sis, Steve Becker, Suzanne Bukert, and Melissa Gormly. And I'd like to note also, by the way, we have a number of openings for commissions and boards and committees, including the Board of Appeals, the Board of Review, Commission on Aging, Community Development Board, Community Safe Routes, and Historic Preservation. If you're interested, or you know anybody who might be interested, please ask them to fill out an application, which you can obtain at City Hall. Item D, excuse me, item E is licenses, one and or two years' operators licenses, as indicated in your packet. Item F permits, a permit for the get the lead out races on 7/21/12 with a request for no parking zone on Fourth Street between Ridge and Camp from 8 to 10. Item G, cancel uncollectible bills for the 2011 budget year. Item H, cancel ambulance uncollectible bills for the 2011 budget year. And I is the farmer's market request, the annual request. Is there any item on which you prefer separate discussion and action?
I'd like to pull item G, the cancel the uncollectible bills, to ask a couple of questions to Dwayne.
Okay.
I just have a question on the minutes. I don't know if we need to pull it, but I have a question.
Okay. Well, let's first vote on the consent calendar minus the item G. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Eileen, what is the clarification?
On the information and discussion items from the February meeting, there was a job description, Director of Administration, and in reading that, it appears that maybe there were some times when it should have said Director of Administration, and it said Finance Director, if I'm reading it correctly. It's, the last sentence, for example, it says a revised job description for the Finance Director with the next packet of information. So I assume that means the Director of Administration instead. So if you just want to take a look at that.
No, it is correct.
It is correct.
The way it is.
Yeah, we talked about having the Director of Administration, and then Steve had wanted
to see what the Director, the Finance Director's job description was going to be along with that, so he could see him at the same time.
Okay, good. I wasn't clear on that. I missed that meeting, and so I wanted to ask about that. Okay.
Question. Okay. We have item G. John, you had a question about that?
Yeah, for Dwayne. So, Dwayne, in the back of the, backside of the sheet, it's for 2008 for the 24/7 Fitness Center. We want to forgive a debt for 582, 83. And then the 2009 for the same 24/7 Fitness Center, the 586, 41. One, what are those? And then two, it says the collection agency is collecting them. Do they take a judgment on those to try to collect them, or do you know the procedure?
Those are personal property tax bills. At some point in time, they will do that. They're trying to collect it at a lower rate. We try that first, and at some point in time after that, then we'll go to the next step. So, yes.
What have been our odds in the past of collecting this money? Do we usually get it back?
Not very good. I mean, obviously, they went out of business, so obviously, they probably don't have much assets to start with. It probably isn't very, very good.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All in favor approving G signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you. Moving on to citizens' comments, observations, and petitions. We have no one who's indicated that tonight. If there's anyone in the audience who'd like to speak, it is our custom to have those who would like to speak on a subject fill out one of the green sheets over there and pass it on to the clerk. Under reports tonight, we have committee reports, Rontry Gallery Board.
I have nothing.
Plan Commission?
Nothing to add.
Please, fire. Those minutes are in your packet. Other reports, Museum Department, 2011 Annual Report, the January Airport Financial Report, the January Water and Sewer Expenditures and Revenues Report, the January City Attorney, item I, Statement Report, and Department Progress Reports. Any item there on which you have questions or would like clarification or make a comment?
I had questions, and the city manager is looking them up for me, so he'll probably get back to me, so.
Okay. Next on the agenda is action items. Item A is the PUD and Development Agreement Amendment for Washington Place Apartments. Joe, would you give us a brief rundown on that, please?
Yeah, that project is underway. If you've noticed, they would like a couple of minor modifications to the development agreement for that apartment project. They did make a slight change to the interior layout of the building. The plan year development was approved for 39 units. They decided to take one of those units out and enlarge an onsite management office. So that would reduce the number of units to 38. And then the LLC, the owner of the project will change, or they'd like to have changed from Plattville Properties LLC to Washington Place LLC. It's still the same individuals. It's two brothers primarily that own it. They just have a different LLC for each of their apartment buildings, so they would like to have that name changed as well. The Plan Commission considered this request and recommended approval, and staff also recommends approval. Any questions?
Okay, thank you, Joe.
Motion to approve?
Second. A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Killian?
Yes.
DeLecky?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item B is a satisfaction of mortgage for Professional Properties LLC at 455 Enterprise Drive. Larry, are you the staff?
Yep. In 2008, the city of Plattville sold their last shell building to Professional Properties LLC. The city sold the property for $400,000 approximately. The city loaned the buyer $54,000 to assist with the purchase of the property. The agreement for the loan had a provision that the loan would be forgiven based on the number and types of jobs created and the amount of investment in the property. Based on the number of jobs created and the investment in the property, it is my recommendation that the developer has met the requirements, and therefore, the loan should be satisfied and removed from the deed.
Questions for Larry?
Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Killian?
Yes.
DeLecky?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item C tonight, under action items, is to award contract 3-12, the Washington and Spring Street reconstruction. Howard, are you up to this?
Yes. We, right. We had nine bidders for our bid opening last week, and we're recommending that the, that contract 3-12-1 Underground Utility Reconstruction, including alternate one sanitary sewer replacement on Union Street, should go to MZ Construction for a bid price of 448, 768, 73. And contract 3-12-2, the street reconstruction, including the alternate one, street, Union Street, street replacement to Lowinger Brothers for their bid price of 252, 252,244 dollars. This project is under budget.
About $90,000 under budget, isn't it? $93,000?
Yes.
Nice to have one of those from time to time.
Someone always has to ask us, Howard, have we used MZ Construction before?
Yes, we have. Last time was on Fifth Avenue Reconstruction, up behind the old hospital Park Place.
Well, I would recommend award of contract 312-1, Washington and Spring Street Underground Utility Reconstruction, including alternate one sanitary sewer replacement on Union Street to MZ Construction for the bid price of 448,768,73. Do you want, can they both be together? And then also awarding contract 312-2, street reconstruction, including alternate one Union Street replacement to Lowinger Brothers Construction for the bid price of 252,244 dollars.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to make a few comments. My comments are mainly about stormwater control, and we're being faced with coming up with an ordinance for stormwater control, and how to fund it. And I think that when we put in a street, we do a street that we should be taking care of any, any change in water flow and any effect of that water flow as far as erosion. And so I'd like to commend Howard Crowfitt, DPW, for the work done at Sunset Drive. That was something brought up here at council, and they put in something at the end of, at the corner there at Sunset to help control the flow, because the flow was being increased from West Hill, a street reconstruction project. Another project, I think, at least looks very impressive to me, is Valley Road. We had a problem there with flowage of water across properties below that area there around Ann Street. And so that looks like a good solution to that particular problem. Now, in this particular street, Washington Street, I would say it's a challenging street. It's a narrow street, and houses are close to the street. The houses have basements. When we previously worked at that area, we had a problem with water getting into a basement on Center Street. So this is something to be watching for. And also, we have a situation where there's quite a bit of slope on Washington Street toward Union Street. So I certainly hope that in carrying out this project, we can be able to control the erosion so that we don't be adding sediment to the, to the drainage way. Construction adds a lot of sediment to, to the waters. And to come in and say, well, we need a stormwater ordinance to control runoff, well, I look at it and see that there's a tremendous contribution during construction. So I hope we can do a good job as far as controlling the runoff and also prevent possible damage to the neighborhood properties as far as seepage. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion or comments? Roll call vote, please. Killian?
Yes.
DeLecky?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item D tonight is the developer agreement with Stevens Construction regarding the Pine Street development. When Ken and I made the agenda, we kind of ran a little bit of a quandary, whether we list this as information or as an action item, given that we had talked about it in a previous meeting. If we're not comfortable with this tonight, we probably should table it. So let's start with either Joe or Larry, whichever one of you would like to explain this.
Joe says, I did the staff report, so I get the honors. We've worked together on putting together a development agreement and worked very well with Stevens Construction. We've come up with a development agreement that I think the city council is going to be happy with. If you read the report that was submitted to the city council on page 233, we talk about the different benefits and costs associated with this development agreement. Perhaps the most, the most political issue is going to be parking. I suspect that that is an issue that the community is going to be most concerned with. This particular development adds about $4.5 million to the tax base. And as a part of this development agreement, with the assistance of the city council, we've, we've decided that we wanted a second level of parking added to the original proposal. And that second level of parking, although somewhat expensive, is ramped parking and is intended to help replace some of the parking that we're using on that individual, on that parking lot, as it exists today. To take an open parking lot that's not contributing tax base and make it a $4.5 million development while also continuing to provide some level of parking is certainly something that I think is in the city's best interest. As you go through the staff report, I highlight several different aspects. Number one, there is a development incentive to help pursue, help to encourage this development to go forward. That incentive was set at about $600,000. That fee actually is equal to the cost of developing the parking ramp, or roughly the same cost, if you consider each parking stall is about $15,000. Point number two on here is that the city would sell the developer the land for $261,000, and that money would come from the TIF as a grant to the developer. So the city would end up walking away from the deal with 261,000. That could be appropriated as the city council sees appropriate. I would recommend either to help replace more parking, or provide additional parking elsewhere, or to continue the redevelopment of our downtown. The third point included in this agreement is a loan. The city intends to, under this agreement, make a loan to the developer for $200,000. This loan is also funded by the TID and would be paid back to the city of Plattville, preferably to the RDA, as stated in the agreement. The RDA could use that to continue their redevelopment efforts of the downtown redevelopment district. So as we look at this agreement, the city is expected to receive a revenue of 261,000 to our general fund for the parking lot. The RDA is expected to receive a payment of $200,000 spread over 10 years to help them continue redeveloping the downtown redevelopment district. The downtown TIF would end up with 4.5 million of new tax base, adding approximately $100,000 annual revenue to the TIF. And then the city will have converted about 51 free, free parking stalls into 20 spots that can be leased by businesses or tenants, and 14 two-hour parking stalls within the ramp, and an additional six parking stalls outside of the ramp. The city will also have completed redevelopment site number nine of the downtown redevelopment plan and increased the density of our downtown. Lastly, this development will help TIF District number seven pay off its existing debt load faster than the current schedule. I see this as a positive development for the city of Plattville and other taxing jurisdictions. Our partners within the TIF, and, and it certainly helps the city complete a redevelopment project that the council has identified as a priority. With that, we recommend approval of the agreement with specific contingencies. Joe, could you take a minute, go over some of those?
Okay. In the, attached to the staff report that Larry just went through, there's a kind of a timeline of approvals. These are the, what I would view as the primary meetings and dates where this project would be reviewed and approved. And with this evening's meeting date, we tentatively say, review the development agreement. And if we approve it this evening with some contingencies, basically outlining the details or the items that we need to finalize and confirm as far as the details. This was just, you know, items that we threw together as, as a, I guess, a checklist to make sure that these items have to be addressed as we go through this project. If you noticed on the site plan that was provided, one of, the first one is to provide a little bit more building area for this project. Bonson Street would be narrowed slightly, so we have to go through that process. There's a public hearing set for the next council meeting. So obviously, that process has to be completed before that can take place. Also with that, the CSM, which would combine this lot with that portion of Bonson Street, that would be discontinued, would have to be approved. And that would give the, if, once that's approved, the final building, the site plans can, those details can be finalized and reviewed. The land itself would have to be sold to the developer. I didn't know if, at this point, if this development agreement is going to be finalized and then come back for approval, or if, once it's done this evening, it's just a matter of signing it. That's a question, I guess, but that would have to be, this decision would have to be made. We've got an easement agreement, a couple of them that we want to work on, the parking. There's some parking proposed along that public alley that would be available for the public, but it would be on private property, so we'd need an easement for that. There's some details as far as language in the agreement regarding insurance, the loan terms, certified estimate that needs to be provided, as far as work in the right of way, financial security that goes along with that. And then the, I guess, the financing details with the note and mortgage, if we need a contingency as far as the city coming up with our funds to provide the incentive to the developer. And then if we narrow Bonson Street, we'd like to verify what that final design is going to be. And it's never really been clarified in our discussions at this point, as far as, is the city going to help pay for that, or is the developer going to pay for those modifications to Bonson Street? So, so those are the, the items that, I guess, we came up with as details that need to be addressed at some point during this process.
I, I'll note that the developers are here to answer questions and to make a brief presentation, but if the city council has any questions for staff at this point, we can certainly answer those.
My first question is, what are you going to use for design guidelines? On the first, on our item one, developer obligations, it says you're going to follow Plattville Municipal Code. So what are you going to use for design guidelines? And I see you're going to have an April 2nd building design review. So are you going to use from chapter 22, or the new guidelines which have just been passed, or both?
We did, we did provide the, the new design guidelines to the developer for their review. The Plan Commission did request another review of the building, so they would like to see some, some type of building details when they review the CSM, I guess, whatever available. But otherwise, you know, they would have to meet the zoning ordinance requirements as part of their design.
Offhand, do you know if they have to meet 22.062, multiple family design review, those standards?
Uh, I guess.
Or are they exempt, because they're supposedly in a commercial historic district?
Right. My intent, and that's why we provided them with the, the new guidelines, is that we use those, since that was specifically designed for the downtown area.
Okay. So you won't be using the 22.062?
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions?
On the, on the Bonson Street here, we're, we're taking part of Bonson Street and using it for the building, is that correct?
We would be narrowing the right of way by seven feet.
What does that do for traffic as far as, I mean, it's one way now, right?
It's one way now.
Fire trucks going to get there.
Basically, the end result is there's four parking spaces on the west side of Bonson Street. Those would probably be eliminated.
Okay, so that's where the mailboxes are now, where you're saying where you drop off your mail?
Right.
Okay. And the sidewalk is still going to go back on the other side, the east side of it?
Uh, well, their, their site plan that they submitted this evening shows a sidewalk remaining on the east side.
Right.
So basically, the end result is the, the street width, curb to curb width, would be narrowed by about three feet, four feet, from what it is now.
Okay. And then on the, the design you gave us, you have six outside places for parking. Is one of those designated as handicap? And I'm not sure what this means, an eight by 23 parking stalls, PYP? Is that for the?
PYP is typical?
Typical. That's the dimensions of the, those stalls.
Okay, okay. I didn't know what that meant. But is one of those, one of those handicapped of the six?
To answer your question, John, I, I would think that closer to four of them are going to be handicapped.
Okay.
Because there's a significant number of handicap parking stalls that are going away as a result of this.
And then on the?
I'll speak on that. Oh, I'm sorry. There's two on the inside.
Well, the two on the inside, I've got, I got those two. I know they added in, number seven is a handicapped stall and number eight.
Yep.
But I think, don't you want to have, I'm assuming those little lines mean that's where they could get out of the van? Don't you want number seven to be where the white lines are, and put the white lines where number seven is? So if you're going to drop a wheelchair out of the van on the side, how are you going to get it out if you're parked next to a, a car in number six? See what I'm saying?
You, so you're suggesting the wheelchair ramps typically come out the passenger side, and as it's designed, it would come out the driver's side?
Right. So don't you want to move that over and put it so that they can drop the?
They come out both. You know, that's some detail that we can work out.
Could make it come in from.
I wouldn't have any position to changing it to one on each side, or?
Whatever. Yeah.
Right, that's what I'm saying, right?
Have it back in.
Yep.
Would you, would you please come on up to the microphone and state your name, please, for us?
Good evening. My name's Ray Bolton. I'm the architect that prepared those drawings. I guess my only caution and concern about the alley is we're limited with space. You would be exiting the vehicle out into public alley, so that would be my only caution about utilizing the alley as, as handicap parking stalls. I don't have enough space between the building. Right now, the property is 132 by 132. This is a colored rendition, Pine Street.
Can you either haul that microphone over or stand by that one or the other? Thank you.
Pine Street would be to the south, Bonson one-way, heading north. As Larry indicated, the new curb would be relocated. We would be picking up seven feet of additional property along the east side of Bonson, which would allow us to do a, a building of approximately 14,000 square feet of student housing on three levels above, with a parking structure below, two levels of parking structure below, which would be approximately 16,000 square feet. We have a building that is 121 feet, six inches deep, so that would allow us within the property line, and with not impacting the alley, that would allow us to do the structure plus do six, six exterior parking stalls. Now, we'd have to work with the city as to which direction we want the alley traffic to be flowing, or the parking to be going. I would assume with a 10-foot wide alley, you wouldn't want it going two-directional, so.
And that would be parallel parking in the alley, then?
Yes, yes. This shows the six stalls, the second sheet, C1.0. It basically shows the new proposed property line with the curb going to the outside face. It basically shows the new proposed property line with the curb going to the outside face. According to my dimensions and the preliminary service, CSM and survey, there, we would end up with about 21 feet of curb to curb for Bonson Street, which would be one way north. I apologize, it's a little small on those 11 by 17s. Even I can't read in my bifogals, so. But we did set the proposed building back from the property line, eight inches on, on the two sides here, only because we don't want to impact the, with the footings being underneath and problems with the foundations being outside the property line. Once we get the topo, we are proposing about 1,200 square feet in the lower-level parking structure for retail, which would be at the corner of Forest Street and, and Pine Street. The southeast corner, there'd be approximately 1,200 square feet of retail. Stairways, obviously, that are required for egress, and then you would be entering the, the city, provided as, as Larry mentioned, the city parking structure would be entering off of Forest Street, coming in, public two-hour parking would be the first 14 stalls, overhead door, and then there are 21, 21 stall, additional stalls that calculated we could provide for, for the city in underground, in addition to the six exterior stalls, which basically, I think I counted out, there are 51 stalls. This proposed plan would provide 41 of those, 51 existing stalls.
Have you considered making any of those compact car only, or somehow getting a little bit more space in there?
Could do that, could do that. I just, and for this initial, I just wanted to make sure that I had backup radiuses necessary, enough width. A lot of it's gonna depend upon the width of the stairs, the egress, once we get into calculations, I might be able to pick up additional parking stalls, correct?
So they're gonna be entering and exiting at the same point, right?
Yep. And I have a 16-foot overhead door. The upper level for the student parking would, would enter off of Bonson, and it was brought to my attention, it might be kind of close coming in off of Bonson, and the only reason we entered off of Bonson is with this small of a footprint, to add ramps to try and get from one level to another, we'd eat up so much parking that it, it made more sense to have two separate entrances and deal with each parking level separately, so. We're entering off of Bonson, and I think I have 36 parking stalls right now. I might possibly be able to get more on that level.
Seems like a small number of parking spots for him there.
Well, the structure's only 132 by, or 134, four by 121 six. And we're required to have stairs, and with it being on the, on the corner, as you can see, you lose a lot of space. You're required to have 24 feet to back up, have two-way traffic, you know, we lose, you're gonna have to maneuver to back out, so you can get out of the parking deck at this level. You've got corners that you lose because of stalls coming together at a corner, so we can look at it, but right now, initially, this was the most efficient pattern. Do you have any idea as to projected need of parking by tenants? Number, the number of bedrooms is what, between 100 and 110? 100, 110, somewhere in there. So, anything you're projecting as far as need? Well, with 36 stalls, you're, you're a little over a third of the, of the students would be, would, would have parking stalls available to them. The ratios that we've found in other projects have been about 1.2 vehicles per students, so here we're about 1.3.
This building is only for students then, or for anybody who would wanna rent?
The intention is for students.
Just for students.
There's, there's living, there's multiple, there's some two-bedroom mix, there's a three-bedroom mix, some four-bedroom proposed that we're looking at, so there's a small kitchen, bathrooms that would be shared, so it's, I suppose, it's primary, the intent was for students. Well, my concern is whether we're gonna have such a greater need for parking that we're gonna force people to park on neighboring streets. And so that needs to be answered here by the city and developer, as far as how this need is gonna be met.
If I may-
I get complaints about, from citizens that they're parking in front of my place.
If, if I may, this issue was brought up at, at the city council meeting when we met with the developer a month or so ago, and at that time, we discussed the, the fact that downtown developments do not have a parking requirement in our city code.
I, I understand that.
And, and what you're bringing up is probably a good issue that the city council should discuss for future developments. Do you want to require parking in the downtown, or don't you? Because right now, we don't require it, and, and maybe we should be. I, I, I don't know, but that's a policy decision that we really need to talk about.
But if we have such a great need, it's gonna make the problem worse for people around downtown.
Yep.
And we'll be getting more complaints.
Well, I thought that was the whole point for the two levels of parking.
Well, that two levels, to me, looks like it won't be enough. The additional level's gonna help, but I, I'd like to see, my personal belief is there should be enough off-street parking for the tenants, whether it's onsite for a development or whether it's off-site.
Well, like, how many do you think you'd need, Ken?
I, I've asked the question.
I, I believe the answer from the developer was that 36 was being provided, and that was an appropriate number. If you believe something different needs to be, then we, we need to discuss what, what a reasonable parking requirement would be.
The developer believes 36 will be enough to meet the need. That's my question. That's, as I understand it, they've done other projects and student housing, so 36 is- So 110, 100 bedrooms, only 36 will need parking. Okay.
Some of this will be resolved the old-fashioned way. If students can't find places to park, guess what kind of student tenants they're gonna get? Students without cars. Since they are easily within walking distance of the university, I suspect over time, that's what's going to happen, is, as the university expands their transportation system, both within the town, as well as services to get students out of town when they need to go home, we'll have less demand for that. If you've read the, the most recent transportation report, just on a little bit of an increase in parking fees this year, the university has down significantly in the number of people who've asked for permits, and so there's some evidence that kind of thing does occur.
I think that begs the question-
The idea is to force students to walk to campus. If you give them a car, then they will drive.
Well, I, I think as far as people not buying parking permits, the price was also raised, from what I understand, so, but my question is this. I believe you said that this first level of parking would have 36 parking spaces? Will you be charging a fee in addition to rent for those parking spaces?
It would be initial, it would be all 36 for the students.
And there will be a fee? Okay, so, and then on the, on the second level of parking, the way I understand the proposal right now is that there would be 21 long-term parking stalls, and my understanding from discussing with the city manager is that those would also be leased?
Correct.
And the developer's agreement says that if, if individuals currently living in the city do not care to pay that fee, then after a couple of months, I think by August 1st, the developer would have the right to lease those spots, is that right?
Yes.
So, I guess it depends on whether or not other people decide to lease those spots, whether or not there would be 36 or an additional 21.
Yep. Right now, the city is providing, free of charge, 24-hour parking for a whole bunch of people that live down in, around, on Main Street down here. We have free parking over there, we've got free parking over here, we've got free parking everywhere, 24 hours. And I guess, really, I think one of the things we've been seeing here in the last year is that maybe for the city of Platteville, the time of free parking is going away.
And the city has certainly discussed that, I would agree with that.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, I think we have to realize, we have to look and say that, uh, people are gonna have to start paying for parking, if they want premium parking. The taxpayers can't subsidize at all. If you have a, you know, if you rent a property off, you know, over wherever, we provide off-street parking.
Well, I think that we've discussed whether it, the-
So, I think that's-
In some of the discussion, we talked about the, if this developer's agreement, for example, would be passed as it's now written, that some of that money that would be paid back could be used to purchase other properties. The question, of course, is where would you purchase those properties? Because you're talking about trying to get something close to downtown, which would mean purchasing existing structures and relocation costs and all that. So it's, I don't disagree that it's a good idea to look at that, it will be a challenge to find the right location.
There are places over here, even if we just walk and look at the lot across the street, if we wanna develop, there's, there's, there's parking places right across the street from here that could be moved to 24 hours, or taken 24 hours, or moved over here, there's a lot of them, pretty, pretty close, and there's a lot of things we can do.
City managers indicated there are other developers looking at that location too, so.
Well, maybe we can't develop them all.
We don't know what's gonna happen down there.
No, I, I agree, I'm not, I'm not saying that, that we don't need parking, we do need parking. I think the question is, where do you get it?
Well, there's that, but I think that over time, we're gonna see less and less need for long-term parking. Anybody here think gas prices are going down anytime soon? I don't think anybody believes that, and the evidence is all in the direction of people moving away from having that. Doesn't mean everybody's gonna do it, but over time, less and less. And yes, the university did raise their parking rates, but that's the point, is that when you have an incentive, you change your behavior. And I think we'll have some of that occurring here. We're not getting rid of all of it, and we're replacing a lot of it, it's just that the evidence is very clear that people respond to incentives. It's very clear.
I, I think as you continue to redevelop your downtown under the redevelopment plan, there were several statements in there about the idea of creating a parking ramp at some time, and, and I think that that's something maybe the city ought to be looking at in the next five, five, 10 years as well. That might help with some of these issues, and, and charge people to park in those spots. I thi, I think that that's certainly an option as future developments occur.
Are there comments by the council? Thank you. We have a number of people have indicated they'd like to speak on this issue tonight, and I ask if you would please move back behind the staff there, so that we can have an orderly progression of people speaking, beginning with Wes Richards, and then Jack Lutke, and then Kathy Kopp, and then Greg Barr, and if you would, please state your name and your address as you begin your comments. Please limit your comments to no more than five minutes, thank you. Wes Richards is first.
Hello, I'm Wes Richards. I guess my biggest concerns about this is the parking. I own property on 60 East Main Street down here. I just don't know where, you know, right now, everybody's parking, there's, you say there's all kinds of 24-hour parking, there's like 12 spots, you know, there's 12 down here by the hair studio, or whatever it is, and then there's, there's 12 behind where the old cop shop is, and then, and next to the post office, how many are in there? Our business there has 10 employees, plus we have apartments upstairs, and the girls gotta go out and move their, their cars every two hours, and what we pay in parking tickets, we'd have no problem paying for, you know, parking, you know, if you had a permit, or, you know, meters, or whatever, but I just don't see, you know, and they're supposed to be parking for 110-plus people living in this building, that's gonna put more pressure on there, even if they all don't have, you know, vehicles, I mean. And the next thing is, is if you go and put this project, this building in this place, where do you propose you're gonna buy property that doesn't have another building on it? I mean, and when, you know, when is that gonna happen, where we're gonna get a parking ramp or something put in? You know, if it's down the road, it's gonna cost the taxpayers a lot more money, you know, to purchase it, tear the building down and build a parking ramp, because costs only go up all the time, so that's my only concerns, is the parking.
Thank you. Jack Lutke?
My name is Jack Lutke, I live at 322 Tamarack Trace, and I'm the executive director for the Main Street program, and I would just like to voice tonight some of the concerns that have already been voiced. The major one, when I hear from the constituents around me and the neighbors on Main Street, is obviously with the lack of additional parking. And for the most part, they're in favor of the development, they like the idea, the concept of getting that back on the tax rolls is favorable to everyone, but I don't think they know enough about the opportunities for parking, and if the count is correct, as these gentlemen expressed it, the loss of 10 spaces is a significant loss to that area. Now, none, no one is opposed to paying either on a permit basis, or, you know, on a fee basis, to, to get those parking spaces. We just need to know that they're not gonna be totally eliminated, that there's gonna be some way to replace that parking, because as the other gentleman said before me, the businesses, their employees and so on, and now parking, they would be happy to pay, and I've had several people say that, particularly since the increase in the parking fees, they'd be happy to pay for a permit to go into a facility, and in your facility, it actually would be a covered facility, which would be better than what they're getting now on the street, and paying the opportunity to pay tickets all the time, or having their employees leave to move their vehicles, which is costing them in the end as well. I would suggest to the council to consider President Deliky's opening comment about tabling this. I know the other concern is, the public hearing isn't scheduled for two weeks on this, so people are, even though this has been posted on the, on the city's website, there are a lot of people in the neighborhood who have not really looked into it, and would like to have the opportunity to come to a public hearing about it before the council really adopted the, the draft proposal for the development agreement. So I would like you to consider that as well. Thank you.
Kathy Kopp followed by Greg Barr, followed by Tom Cradwell.
My name is Kathy Kopp, I live at 415 North Second, and I'm the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce. I'm gonna keep it short, I echo 100% what Jack said tonight. We have been fielding a lot of questions and major concerns by our members in the downtown business district as far as parking issues, and so we're not, I'm not here tonight to say yes or no to the project, it is the concern about parking with the downtown businesses. The increase in number of residents in the downtown kind of reflects back to the individual businesses, they're very small businesses, they depend on the people that are able to drive into the downtown area to do their business. So it's a major concern, and we appreciate your consideration. So, it's a major concern, and we appreciate your consideration.
Glenn Barr?
My name is Glenn Barr, I own the business at ten West Main Street, it's Surchen's Florist. I'm gonna echo what Kathy and Jack have just said. Our building is a hundred and fifty years old, a lot of downtown is historic. Those buildings, when they were built, didn't plan for the kind of parking that is now needed. To listen to Steve and Mike, there is not twenty-four-hour parking available for what the need is downtown right now. If you want downtown businesses to survive, there has to be parking available for tenants, for employees, and for customers. It's the downtown lifeblood. You're gonna see downtown businesses die if we don't have that kind of parking available for them. And taking away even ten parking places when we're already struggling to have enough is very difficult. Mikey mentioned that people are gonna drive less with the cost of gas. It doesn't cut down on the number of employees that have to get to work. It doesn't cut down on, on tenants, students that come from out of Platteville to come to school here and live in our apartments. And it doesn't cut down, well, it does not cut down on our customer base that has to have a place to park on the street in order to come and allow our businesses to thrive. If we don't have those street parking places taken up by employees and tenants, then the customers can come. But when you take away more parking, you're choking downtown. And what I've seen are cities that have ignored that fact, developed their city to a point where, as much as Larry is doing a great job with, with looking at the income it would bring, what kind of income are you looking at when businesses go out of business and go off the tax rolls? That's not good business. You have to think of the long term of how to keep the downtown healthy. Thank you very much.
Tom Cradwell followed by Connie Steinoff.
I'm, uh, Tom Cradwell, and I have property at sixty-five West Main with four apartments. And, um, anyway, I'm concerned about the parking lot going there because I have, I'm sure, some tenants that use the twenty-four-hour parking. And, uh, anyway, I believe the parking lot is totally vital to the survival of Main Street. Excuse me. Anyway, um, I think it's like gonna be the, like, the last nail in the coffin if this goes through. Last week, I talked to several shop owners on Main Street, and, um, get over this nervousness, anyway. Anyway, I talked to several of them on Main Street, and all of them agreed that parking is needed. And, uh, some of the other owners, uh, didn't come tonight, and I guess they kinda feel that, um, it's a hopeless case, and they would like to have the council people come down and visit them at the stores and, uh, you know, address their needs, um, instead of coming here. And then, um, anyway, on the long-term parking, uh, long-term parking, we have two problems on long-term. One would be the students that stay overnight, and we have, uh, long-term parking where people are moving their cars every two hours to, uh, you know, to get away from the parking tickets. And, um, anyway, I have one secretary that does that. I, when I was talking to, um, uh, uh, let me see, Joe Carolla, he's, I mentioned people who are moving to parking, parking our cars in the, in the street every couple hours to avoid the tickets, so it's a big problem. And, let me see. Okay, uh, okay, and if we took care of the long-term parking with the parking lot, then we could take care of the short-term parking where people could park on Main Street for customers. We could take care of the person with, uh, a UPS that can't find a place to park, and he has to run packages up and down Main Street, using today complaining about that. The other thing is, is I feel that we could have applied for, um, bonds, stimulus money, low-interest municipal bonds, and, uh, different things twenty years ago. And we could have been charging fees. I've been, I've been renting two stalls for the last fifteen years from, uh, Delahannies and Light Properties. And that's for myself to park, and one secretary that goes out on appointment. So, I do pay thirty bucks a month for that. And I don't wanna park on the street, or I don't wanna park in a parking lot. Some other things here. Okay, okay, one of the reasons that we're looking at Bonson Street is being underutilized, I feel is because we didn't utilize it in putting in a parking ramp. If we put in that ramp twenty years ago, I'm sure that we'd be renting it out. I've had, um, eight people stop by to rent my apartments this year, and they all had to turn it down because they have four cars. So, we have a lot more than, um, one-point-two or whatever you say it is. But anyway, I had four, they have four cars, and they have to go out to the college farm, they have to work, and, uh, so they had to move out in the country to a house where they could park the four vehicles. If you drive around town, you go into a driveway, you'll see maybe three or four cars parked on the lawn, which doesn't look good. So, if you look at those houses, there's more than two cars per unit there easily. Let me see, post office employees, they have to load their, their, uh, mail in the morning, and they're there like, you know, nine o'clock, ten o'clock. And when they come back from the routes, they're back on that same street again, so they need that street for loading their mail. And, uh, MRC, uh, I talked to them, they're concerned about their truck deliveries because they have, um, uh, trucks that actually park in the street and block the traffic for an hour unloading paper that they use for their printing. I mentioned the UPS guy. And, um, I feel, you know, that if you sell this parking lot off, we're in a free fall and there's no turning around, just like jumping off without a parachute. Where are we gonna get another lot that's going to service the downtown, uh, Main Street? So, I feel we should be keeping it instead of giving it away. And I say giving it away because the price on it is, uh, two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars, and if we're giving these guys stimulus money to, to reduce the taxes, basically Joe told me it's kinda like a free, free parking lot. And, um, I think we could do better with our taxes than, than give it away free. Let me see, let me get to anything else. Okay, the other thing I mentioned too is, if you go down Main Street, we have millions of dollars invested, and we're collecting taxes from us every, every year. And you take all the side streets with all the parking and the stores and the, and the apartments, and I think we should be better protected than selling off that lot. And that's all I have, thank you.
Connie Steinoff?
I really had no intention to be here to speak on this issue because I thought I had a very thorough understanding of it.
Please state your name and address.
Oh, my name is Connie Steinhoff, I am the senior center director. The senior center is really close to this development. I thought I had a very thorough understanding of what was going on here. And, uh, and, you know, we were, we were working with what we were told. Uh, you have to forgive my casual apparel because I had no idea I was coming. I saw this on television, I ran over. My concern is for the seniors that come and park. Right now, they park in that lot, and we utilize a lot of those free parking spaces as well as all of the handicap spaces that are currently there. What I heard tonight that really has me concerned is that the public parking was going to be on the lower level that would enter from Fourth Street. And I just ask you to consider this, if you're an elderly person who has a handicap, needs a handicapped spot, has to park in a lower level, has to walk out onto Fourth Street, turn the corner, up the alley to get to the senior center, are you going? We have, we really thought that the, the level of parking that would accommodate the public would be on Bonson Street. And I think that that would be more appropriate if that could be worked into the plan. So, just my two cents worth as far as the seniors are concerned.
Thank you.
I would move to table the developers agreement. And I don't know if I should stay until after the twenty-seventh. I guess the twenty-seventh is our public hearing, so certainly it would be, I would think, the first meeting in April before we would discuss it again. Does that sound right? And I'm open to suggestions.
There's no reason we can't discuss it at the next meeting either. We wanna restate what you said, just so we're clear.
Um, I guess my motion would be to table the developers agreement until the first meeting in April. That allows us to have time to have the, um, public hearing on the twenty-seventh and take input. And then, if there are changes perhaps as a result of that, that gives staff time to look at it and council people time to look at it. I don't have the time schedule in front of me, but I think after-
This is April tenth, development agreement for final approval.
Yeah, April second, the plan commission would then have their meeting, so if we had our discussion then at the next, April, at that April tenth meeting?
Okay.
Yep, I think so. Which is when we had originally said we would do the final approval for the developers agreement, so I think that works. That's my motion.
I'll second.
The longest motion in the history of the world.
It is, isn't it? I couldn't make up my mind.
We've got a motion to second the table till the first meeting in April's.
April tenth evidently.
I have a, a comment.
There, there's no, there's no discussion on a motion to table. Roll call vote, please.
Killian?
Yes.
Deliki?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Becker?
No.
Steiner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Larry, you had a comment.
I wanted to make sure, number one, that Jan got the motion. I was pretty wrong. Jan, did you got it all?
Actually, so, a lot of it was rational, not actually the motion.
Just to table the first meeting in April, April tenth meeting.
And, and secondly, I was wondering if the city council had any feedback for staff or the developer on things that you think we need to take a second look at?
Well, I think Connie had a, a good point.
We, we did talk about that, uh, the idea of trying to have the parking lot on second floor. And I don't know if you guys recall that conversation. At that time, it wasn't something that we could get into the deal, but maybe now, having heard the public comments, uh, we could sit down and, and talk about it some more. But we have discussed that, and that was something that we, we did look at. Any other?
I guess, uh, design of the building. Talked about historic, uh, district, obviously, a lot of, um, hundred, hundred-and-fifty-year-old buildings. Wondering what, are you going to make it look, uh, fit into the neighborhood, in other words? Or, maybe you don't have anything in mind right now, I don't know. But, um, I would be concerned about, um, you know, the exterior design also. I think Ken had brought it up earlier.
We, we do have design standards that they have to follow.
Yes.
And April second, the plan commission, it's listed as CSM approval and also building design review, so hopefully by April second, there would be something available for us to look at.
Certainly by April tenth, you would have some idea. Part of the, the scenario we're at right now is, is we're trying to gauge the city council to determine whether or not this project is, I guess, on, on behalf of the developers, I wanted, I wanted to try to get a feeling from the city council as to whether or not you thought this was something that they should continue to, to develop and, and put resources into this planning document to continue the process? Or if there are substantial holdups where you may not be interested?
Well, um, I'd wanna comment on Glenn Barr's, um, when, when he was talking, he said, um, he has fears that a project like this would, uh, drive away businesses from the downtown. However, I look at it as putting a hundred more customers really just a few feet from your businesses.
Please, 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 we don't, we don't do that.
So, that's why, when presented with this, uh, project, they presented it to the council in a work session a few weeks ago, I mean, that's how I look at it. And again, at the time, I didn't consider it really student housing, just housing. Anyway, I, I, I look at it as bringing more people to the downtown and, um, forcing them, well, not really forcing them, but not, making them rely so much on, on driving. And if they're out walking around, then they're going to be out walking around the downtown businesses and hopefully being customers.
That'll vary by business, they probably aren't gonna buy a lot of flowers except on Valentine's Day, but my guess is the food places and the bars will be happy.
I, um, a couple of things. One of the, one of the concerns that was expressed here was the loss of parking available for two-hour parking for customers to come in and choose, uh, for the downtown businesses. I'd like you to look at what we could, how many lots, how many parking places can we get over here across the street? Now, I, I mean, across the street over here, you got some old junk city cars that've been sitting there for a year, or two years, and they're in spaces. Get those out of here, throw, put them up there in the, uh, city, uh, garage, and I bet you could get seven or eight more slots right over there. I want you to take a look at where we can get some more downtown parking as quick as we can to tie it in with this. I think there's some available here, I think that's one thing we need to look at. What do we have that's currently not being efficiently used? I think there's some places we can look there. The other thing, as far as the positive thing, we're talking about, um, we're talking about adding a hundred thousand dollars to taxes, to the taxes that are coming in. We're paying out, I mean, if you, if you do the debit and credits here, okay, you're paying, you know, left hand, right hand, if you look at what you're paying out, the six-hundred thousand dollars, uh, that you're, you're given, and you're getting a hundred thousand dollars coming in on the tax base. I mean, that's a, uh, you know, I, I know it's not all city, uh, money, but it's still a hundred thousand dollars coming, and that's a six-year payback. Now, if I was investing in some, uh, real estate and I could, I have a six-year payback, I'd be looking at that as a pretty darn good investment. And you talk about what we should've did twenty years ago? That's right, we should've did a lot of things twenty years ago. But if we sit here and we do nothing now, twenty years from now, well, I won't be here listening to it, I doubt, but somebody's gonna be hitting, coming up there and saying, "Well, we should've did that twenty years ago." So, I think we gotta look at where we're gonna be twenty years down the line, and so we don't have somebody else coming up and saying, "Well, we didn't do anything twenty years ago." So, I think we should, we need to look at these types of developments, see what they're really can, gonna contribute. You can't just sit still.
Let me, let me ask this, Larry, would, would you ask your staff to provide us with a map showing existing downtown parking? What's twenty-four hours, what's two hours? And where are some places that we might be able to shift parking to in order to provide more, uh, as we consider this project?
See if there's any recommendations for changes.
The other thing is that, I, I'm kinda surprised how little parking's in there, and, and I suspect those spots are sized so that anybody with a Lincoln Navigator can get in there and park. And I'm sure that, that some of those spots could be designated for compact cars. You can squeeze four where you got three. Uh, I've got a Ford Focus, I don't need a thirteen-foot-wide spot in order to park, and, and most people don't have huge cars. So, there's gotta be some ways we can get more parking in that structure than just thirty-four. That's, that's a small number. Maybe redesign it, maybe, I know you've got some requirements that require backing up and so on, and we could have them so they're all pulled through, they don't have to back, never mind. I'm not gonna do your job for you.
Okay. I appreciate the feedback, we'll, we'll just go back to the drawing board a little bit and try to tweak it a little bit more, um, and hopefully we'll have more information for you at a future meeting.
If you'd come up to this microphone, please. State your name and address.
Mark Runicke, I'm one of the developers. I'm, I live in, live in Sun Prairie, not, not in Platteville. The, the problem that we've got with, 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 in general, it's a, it's a parking problem, it sounds like, in downtown Platteville, that's much bigger than just this, this project. If you're talking about problems with deliveries and other things, that really has very little to do with the parking lot involved with this, this project. So, obviously, that's, that's an issue, whether this project goes forward or not, that, that, that everybody here's gonna have to deal with going forward in some, some fashion. As, as we push this project forward, I, I don't have a, a good read on, on the situation. I don't, I don't know if there's support for the project or not at this point. And we're at the point of spending a lot of money in design. The, the, the schedule of how, how the project moves forward, if we don't think it's, it's gonna have the support of the city council, the, the rest of that doesn't keep moving forward. So, I guess, I, I would guess I would like, if it's possible, to get, get some more feedback as, in general, if this is, if the issues seem insurmountable, or if it's something, we've, we've tried to work with, with staff, and, and obviously, we've met in the past and tried to address the parking issues best that we, best that we could. We're also running into sort of a time crunch, obviously, if it's designed for student housing. We've gotta have a delivery date, you know, August first, August fifteenth. we've got to have a delivery date, you know, August first, August fifteenth, in 2013. By the time we get through approvals and design, and two levels of underround parking, getting it built, if we table this, as you already have done, for another month, we are right, we are out of leeway as far as schedule goes to get through everything that we need to get through, to get the project open, you know, sixteen months from now.
Well, we will not try to drag it out on you. And obviously, if you can't get it open at the time you need it open, it doesn't fly, so.
Right.
And I'm not going to speak for everybody, I'm going to speak in general here. My sense is that people generally like the idea of the project. Our problem is making sure that the parking doesn't become such an issue that that we create more headaches than we're solving by doing this. And I think that if we look at some other places to do parking in town here and downtown, that we can resolve that. And we can do some other things too, such as we did over near the university, which is if we're simply going to have people moving out into neighborhoods and parking, well, that can be addressed, too. We've done that before, we could do it again. I think if we get a map here showing where parking is, we can look at it and take into account some of the comments people made tonight about how we're going to put these cars and see if we can find some other places in which we can do that. And I think, I think we can do that. Whether the rest of the council feels that way or not, you have to poll them. Okay, all right.
Could you consider a motion saying that the obstacles to this development are not insurmountable? I don't know if that means anything to the city, but if that would help the developer decide whether or not to go forward. Okay, I'm just pressing, never mind.
Well, but I can say this, Mark, and Larry, and to all the other council people, when we had our meetings, we told you guys there's not going to be a problem, and go ahead with it. So I don't know why everybody's changing, or I know that parking is an issue, but we're talking ten spots, and I agree with Steve, him and I looked at ten spots right across from the city, right over here. We can change that to two-hour parking, and we're almost to the same amount of parking spots before this project started, so I mean, I again, we told our developer, "Go ahead with this," and now we're doing this again to developers, so I'm very disappointed in that part.
I think it's a good project. That was why we all were in agreement, we needed the second level of parking, because we knew it would become an issue. And I'm sure parking can be worked out. I think it's a good project.
Thank you. Moving on tonight, the information and discussion items. Item A is repeal of the tax increment district incentive policy. Larry, would you briefly explain that for us, please?
Certainly. We found an error in this incentive policy, and for the benefit of the municipality, we're recommending that we just repeal the policy and think long-term about a new policy. The existing policy, quite frankly, has an error in it. If you'll notice on page three of the policy, our existing policy is to pay one percent of capital costs or building costs for every fifty thousand dollars invested. Essentially, that policy says that if a building is more than five million dollars to construct, we're paying the hundred percent of the building. I think that a policy like that needs to be voided, and we need to sit down and think about a new policy, one that can provide a solid foundation for negotiations going forward. So I'm requesting that you discontinue this policy.
So if we want a building that's five million dollars paid for for free by the city, we should hurry and get it going?
I understand your objection to that particular part. I honestly thought, though, some of the other parts of the ordinance or policy were actually pretty good, so I guess...
I agree.
You know, I don't know about...
There are parts of it that are good.
Putting away with all of it, because then we have nothing.
I guess I'd like to engage in a long conversation with the city council about what types of policy you really want to see. And I know you've taken a look at the policy, and you're comfortable with some of the other provisions, but I'd still like to have that dialogue.
Can we, well, we can do whatever we want, but next time, maybe excise that part and leave the rest intact.
I guess that's what I'm asking, Larry, do we have to disband the whole, or take away the whole policy, or can we look at that particular incentive and say, "That's really..."
You can do whatever you want. My recommendation is to delete the whole policy and start over. But if you like that policy, you have the right to say, "What we really want to do is eliminate that section."
I think what I'm asking is, what takes its place? You know, how long does it take to get a policy in place then?
This policy has been in a drawer probably for ten, fifteen years, and hasn't been used. And so, taking a year away from the policy to create a new one, or six months, I don't think is going to be a disadvantage to the city. I think that we'll get a better product in the end.
I guess, I can have a discussion with you about this, but whether or not we have used it, just didn't say we were using it.
Okay. Or have it in a work session.
Okay. Item B under information is the Library Board of Trustees' request for transfer of funds, and this, I think Carolyn Schuler should explain to us. You do it right from there, Carolyn, if you want.
I think you have the letter in the packet with the, that the board asked me to write about the fifty thousand dollars not being used as stated in your 2012 annual budget. I wanted to give some background of that money, first of all, so you might understand where the board is coming from. There is a Wisconsin statute, number forty-three point one-two, paren one, that requires counties that do not maintain a consolidated public library for the county, and that contains residents who are not residents of a municipality that maintains a public library, so are non-residents who use our library. They're required to pay, the counties required to pay annually a certain amount based on a formula set forth in the statute. And this statute indicates that the payments to be made to the public library, and the payment from the county for the library services goes to the library and not the municipality. Prior to my first tenure as library director, Ms. Sheets was here, and every year did not spend down the county money. Over the years, that county money accumulated. When I came in 2006, it red-flagged me, because it's my understanding that county money is to spent down first before municipal money is used. This was not done, a lot accumulated, and I asked my board in 2007, July fifth, I have a letter that we asked Dwayne to transfer a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars from the county funds, which was the library fund, to a state investment pool fund at that time, which was interest-bearing. These funds were, at that time, set aside as an initial investment for the future renovation of the library building. At that time, Mr. Berner was city manager, and we were planning, we were talking about a library building, so that's why that money was set in that account. The statutes also say that the library board has exclusive control over that money, so I was a little alarmed when I came back in 2011 and saw that there was a comment on page five in your highlights of the annual budget that stated, "In order to reduce funds needed by borrowing, fifty thousand dollars will be used out of the library building fund." It sort of alarmed me, and I felt like we were sort of being penalized for money that we had set aside that was our money. So the board, when I brought it to their attention, asked me to write the letter that you have in your packet. We have put off renovations to the library. It's starting to look a little shoddy and a little shop worn, and the board would like me to use some of that money to do some painting, get a little carpeting, et cetera, and would like the fifty thousand dollars designated in this account to not be appropriated for its use. And that's what I'm asking about for the fifty thousand dollars.
It has to be asked, is there other money there that could be used for those projects?
Not in our current budget, no.
But in that account?
In this account, in the building fund account? Right, we would use some of that money. We're also, are we going to renovate? Are we going to have a new building? What are we going to use this money for? So it's sort of a catch-22 right now. If we're going forth with a building project, then we would use the money for that as it was originally designated on the advice of the state and our system, is to red-flag that, or not red-flag, to flag it for use for building. Is that clear?
No, it sounds to me, if I'm remembering what you said here, that you had a hundred seventy-five thousand set aside, and this fifty is out of that hundred seventy-five thousand, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, but there's still the other money remaining there that could be used to do this maintenance work.
There is, however, that initially had been set aside for a renovation or a new building, and I feel by taking the fifty thousand dollars, it was sort of penalizing us for not using it.
Well, I need to note one other thing about this, and it's been a concern, and again, this was not you that did this, and nobody should connect you with this act, because it's not you. You're just getting to deal with the ramifications of it. That was money that should have been used to defray the cost of running the library, and they stuck it in account and made the taxpayers pay the difference. And so, while it may legally be in an account that's supposed to be controlled by the library, morally, it really belonged to the taxpayers and should have defrayed the cost of running the library. Instead, it got shunted aside into this special account. And so, people need to know that. And you, again, are not the one that did this.
Right, or should we go back to the county? The county is asking for accountability of that over the years, and it wasn't done. I don't know where it fell into the cracks, but...
I understand what that...
And advice of our system and the state itself, they said, "Please designate this for future use for renovation of a library building," so that's how it got to the point where it is right now for that. And so this letter was written on bequest on behalf of the board, who wanted to request that this be turned, and not be appropriated. I don't think it's been designated yet, but they don't want us to appropriate, or you to appropriate. And I understand, because you have your budget, that it takes more than just a majority vote to overturn that, so that's what we're asking for.
So are you also asking, though, the fifty thousand, if we don't give it back to you, the county may ask for all of the money back that was set aside for the building project, correct?
I don't think they'll ask for it back, no.
Are we talking about two amounts here? One is fifty thousand, and the other one is forty thousand nine fifteen?
The board asked me to include that. I have yet to identify how that money was used or what it was designated for, and I can't find any bills for it yet, so I'm still working on that, going through old minutes, old bills, et cetera, and have not quite identified that. I included it at the bequest of my board.
I think Dwayne might be able to help with that. Wasn't that money that Rose had asked to be transferred to the operating budget?
Yes, but it doesn't designate which accounts it was used for. That's what she's trying to find out, what accounts, so she can tell the county how it's allocated.
Okay.
The records are a little sketchy.
And I want to note, Carolyn's done a terrific job trying to pull some of this information together, not only this, but some other things as well, so... And you've been here, what, three months, four months?
Just in memory, seventh, yeah.
Seven months, okay, well, time's...
Okay, I have a memory from before, so I know about this.
Let me ask you this. Since item C here is related to item B, if you would like to just speak on that real briefly or not?
I don't feel comfortable speaking on that. I just found out about it last Tuesday at our board meeting, and while I've seen the application, I think it's sort of misnamed under information. It says, "The Library Board of Trustees' Request." I know that there's a proposal for a contract to do some development and plan, planning for grant, grant and facility grants. And I think, instead of request, it's more that we're encouraging the city to consider this. The contract is between the city and its developer, and not the library board as of yet.
It does say that encourages, it doesn't say...
Right, but on your minutes here, it says request, so I just want to be clear that we're just giving the support because we are in support of any future building project, so the board endorsed that at the meeting.
If the council doesn't mind, I'm going to fill a piece in here, since I'm on the library board, that connects these two together. There is apparently a good chance that if we did the application in the right fashion, that we could get as much as a five hundred thousand dollar facilities grant from the state that could be applied toward some form of library renovation, new building, new development, take your pick however you want to define that. And there would be some cost in applying for that, but we have reason to believe the odds of getting that grant are very high, which would seem to make it a reasonable kind of thing to invest money and to try to get a grant like that, since if we do have any chance of doing development on a library block, to be able to add a half million dollars to the effort is not a trivial amount of money. And so that was the other part of this equation, which was, as I recall, to ask the council to release that fifty thousand back, but also to, I'm not sure "offer" is the right term, but certainly to suggest that the money needed to do the planning for this grant and the grant writing would come out of that money. So it isn't just disappearing into that fund again, but rather would be used as seed money in order to see if we couldn't get a big, a big grant in order to help put us in the direction of being able to solve this library problem. Did I get that pretty close?
Yes.
I'm confused. Who is the developer? The council's never seen a library plan, a developer. We're asking for five hundred thousand, which is great. I don't mean we shouldn't. But what are we going to use this for? Are we using it to say we're building a four-million-dollar library? We're using it to build a two-million-dollar library? There's nothing here.
It wasn't designated to a specific project or amount, but rather...
But how can you write a grant for five hundred thousand if they don't have an idea? The grant, the grant people have got to have some kind of a form, some kind of a blueprint. And how come the council isn't involved in any of this? All of a sudden, it's, where is this coming out of the air of? Someone's writing a grant.
There are, in fact, two grant applications that would be done here. One is to do a planning grant, which essentially is what you're saying, which you can't just ask for money without some idea how you're going to spend it. And a planning grant would then provide a basis for saying what the need is and so on. And then the second grant would be to actually go and apply for that money. As far as the council being involved, we put it on its informations to bring the council at least partially up to speed. This isn't something necessarily to vote on tonight, or even next time, but rather, this is how we're getting information to people here, to start thinking about it and see what their concerns are. You have some concerns about specifically what it would mean, and I think we need to have answers for those.
I think the intent was to use some of that library building fund that's remaining, plus foundation money that we have, plus the five hundred thousand dollars to make a nice package to go forward in any sort of development.
And I know, John, you and I had a number of conversations about this, and I know what your concerns are, and then the same is mine, which is that we don't get cart before the horse here and find ourselves committed to some massive project that we have difficulty affording, and I feel the same way.
We voted that down in June of 2010, that we were going to do, we're not going to do that.
And of course, we had a a potential development project for the library block, which is on hold right now.
If I may expand on that.
Sure, please.
We had a developer that was looking at redeveloping the entire block, and they had many of the properties already under option to purchase. And that option expires in June, I believe. And what has happened is that developer has backed out. They had gone the route and collected all of the options, had it all ready to go, and then they said, "Well, we really can't continue with the project. One of our other projects didn't work out, and now we're behind." And so we're shopping for a new developer. And as a city, we think we have someone. On March nineteenth, I'm meeting with a developer. I've also met with a local developer who is, well, a local gentleman who is not a developer, who has some funds to invest, and he's talking to his partners. I think that this project is attractive to developers. I don't think we're going to have a problem finding one. The key is going to be, do we find them before June first to still use the options that exist on existing homes on that block? Because if you wait until after June first, then all you need is one homeowner that decides that they refuse to sell, and the whole project goes down the drain. So the key here is the timeline of June first, and making sure that whatever our plan is, we have something in the works before June first, so that there's some entity that can close on the properties and assemble them. If we wait till after June first, many of you know that, once the option expires, you know, if I'm a homeowner, I could double the price of my property, and it might hurt the deal. The deal might fall through. So I guess, from a strategic standpoint, I think we have some timelines that we have to meet. Now, whether or not that impacts this particular agreement, I can't really speak to that right now. But we are actively pursuing a development professional to take this project, and we think that we are going to find someone relatively quickly.
I think that one of the major ideas for that block... I think that one of the major ideas for that block was, and unless it works out, since that the details work out, none of this is set in stone, and everybody needs to understand that, that these are ideas people are exploring. And as everybody knows, 75% of those things blow up before you ever get to the point where they even turn a shovel of dirt. But one idea was to develop the north side of the block, provide a space for a new library space in there, and then move the library over and develop the south side of the block. And then the question was, could we find a way to own that in some sort of a condo arrangement where we'd still own the building as a city of Plattville, or own that part of the building in which the library was situated? And the thinking was, on the part of the library board and just generally, is that if we have the way to do that, we can't probably afford to put this new thing in there and absorb a $200,000 year lease or something, because everybody knows the budget is bad as it is. And so the thinking was, how do we come up with a piece of money that we might be able to buy off part of that, and between with what's in the foundation and other fundraising, maybe some donations, there's maybe half a chance that can be paid for completely? At least that was the hope and the dream. And again, 75% of these things blow up before you ever see the light of day, so.
When I share this project with potential developers, I share it under the idea that the tax base generated from the redevelopment of the block has to pay for the library lease. If we're going to lease space, we have to have a revenue source from those taxes on that block to pay for that. We don't want to incur additional costs to our operating budget and our capital budget. We simply don't have the flexibility to borrow money for this. So we need to find a way to pay for it, and the only way to pay for it is with new development and new growth on that block. And so that's been the framework with which we're working under. Obviously, the grants and fundraising will help as well, and I think that that's certainly a good idea to pursue grants and fundraising. I'm anxious for a developer to pick this up, and the sooner we get that going, the easier it'll be to determine what grants need to be applied for.
And this doesn't necessarily mean it's coming back for action next week unless there's some real specifics that could be presented to you, and right now, I don't know that we have that, so. But this is kind of where things are and kind of the thinking that's going on. And again, nobody should get overly excited about it one way or the other. We already thought we had something going, and that failed, so that's one. Wouldn't surprise me if we run into some other roadblocks along the way. It happens. It's like tonight with the development behind the post office. We run into issues, so. That's what those two are. Did I come pretty close on that, Carolyn?
Thank you, yes.
Okay. At this point, we end the televised part of the meeting. We'll go into a work session, at which point we'll discuss the Second Street Reconstruction Project, city dispatching, municipal building. Then we have an action item regarding community development block grant acceptance, and then a closed session, in which we'll talk about pending litigation as well as some industrial park property issues, and then return for adjournment. So we'll take a five-minute break and be back at it.